Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, good morning. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Hiberger. It's just a reminder to silence your cellphone. And Craig and Carol are here this morning if you would like a listening device. So that takes us to routine business. I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes for August 18th, 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $783,580.87.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
There are a couple larger bills in this week's bills. There's $193,000 for 9/11 services. There's a capital expense of $131,000. And in reading the bills, I noticed, you know, the normal maximum we pay on utilities to prevent a disconnect is $420. Well, there's one that's a bit more than that, and I inquired with Kerry Benz, and it was paid with One Sioux Falls. And so it's on our bills for more than $420, but it was part of our partnership with the city there.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
One more thing.
Okay.
Oh, we had two funerals for two grand each.
Thank you. Quite the wide variety of things that we cover in our... And it's never more apparent than when you look through the bills, you can really see the... Just the breadth of things that the county touches. So, all right. At a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item, reports. There are none. Personnel actions. I'd consider a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
Move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is a special commission action to consider a new position classification for the JDC Training and Compliance Officer at a pay grade 14. Kerry Dever, good morning.
Good morning. You might recall that during last year's budget process, we discussed adding a new position at JDC for Training and Compliance. At that point, we budgeted a pay grade 14, knowing that Jamie and his assistant director, Nate Owens, would work out a job description that we'd use to formally classify it. The position was authorized for September 1st. Jamie and Nate have worked on that information. We've taken a look... We took a look at it, and we're recommending classification at a pay grade 14 and a title of JDC Training and Compliance Officer. Jamie is here. If you have any questions or wanted to discuss the position, but what we're really looking for today is just formal approval of the classification.
Comments? Anybody have any questions? Jamie, is there anything you wanted to add?
No, we're just really excited to have this position to move forward with some of the issues that we face on a day-to-day basis, and we're ready to get moving with it, so...
Thank you.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks for being here this morning. All right. Item six, abatements. There are none. Item seven, notice and request. There's a notice from the Hartford Township of a speed limit change from 55 miles to 40 miles on 466th Avenue from 261st Street to 262nd Street. That's just a notice. There's no one here to speak about that issue.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Barth.
There have been complaints from the Hartford Township Board about gravel trucks speeding on that road, and I think they're all anecdotal without, you know... Obviously, the sheriff would be the guy that needed to enforce that. And I guess my only concern is that they're trying to put those businesses out of business by, you know, making the speed limit lower if, in fact, it's not those trucks that are exceeding the speed limit. And what's going to happen when residents are pulled over and fined for that? I think it might be something that they should be more... Take more review on.
That the township should take more review on. Thank you. Anyone else? Great. Item eight, planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item nine, petition for compromise of lien. There are none. So that takes us to opportunity for public comment. Is there anyone here today for public comment? This is your opportunity to come forward. All right. Doesn't appear there's anyone here today for public comment. So that takes us to regular business. First item is a public hearing to consider the 2020 Annual Burn-Jag Program Spending Plan. Joe Bosman, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Bosman with the Minnehaha County Sheriff's Office. I have before you this morning an opportunity for public comment as part of the grant requirements for the 2020 Justice Assistance Program spending. The program spending outline was provided to the Auditor's Office a couple weeks ago, and at this time, we would entertain anyone that has any comments on the spending plan.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. So does anybody have questions for Joe about the plan? Are there any other proponents here to speak on that plan? Okay. Then is there anyone here that's opposed to the plan that was presented that would like to speak? Then I guess you don't have to do a rebuttal. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Barth?
I think in the past, we've often got these proposed as an equitable distribution, and this one says a disparate distribution, and I appreciate that.
I would make a motion to approve the spending plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments? Roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
All right. That takes us to item 11, which is also a public hearing and a second reading to approve or deny rezon 20-03. David Heinhold, good morning.
Morning, Commissioner. David Heinhold, County Planning Department. So rezoning 20-03 is to rezone from the A-1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. This property is located just south of the intersection of South Dakota State Highway 115 and County Highway, which is also known as Midway Corner. The... As you recall, a couple months ago, parcel to the south was just rezoned to commercial. So this would... This is a half-acre parcel that would also be commercial to finish out that southeastern part of that intersection. The Planning Commission has voted last month to unanimously recommend approval of the rezoning request to the C Commercial District. I have a few pictures of the site, but there's a couple houses that are in process of being moved off the property. If you have any questions on any of the items or the things that were in your packet, I'd be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Any questions for David? Commissioner Barth?
David, just to be clear, there is a house on that property now, and they will lose that eligibility if they tear it down, right?
Correct. The building eligibility will be gone if it's rezoned to commercial.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for David? Is there anyone else for the proponents here that would like to speak?
Don't necessarily need to speak, but I'm Todd Ibis. I'm with the company making the changes to the property and just available for any questions.
Any questions? All right. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who's opposed to this item? All right. Seeing none, then there's no need for rebuttal, I guess. Any questions? Or if not, I'd take a motion.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. That takes us to item 12, which is to authorize the Chair to sign the 2021 Local Emergency Management Performance Grant Subrecipient Agreement. Jason Gierman, good morning.
Morning, Jason Gierman with the Emergency Management. I'm here today to request that you sign the Local Emergency Management Performance Grant. And this is also a time where I'm kind of required to brief you on it. There isn't much to brief on, other than we adjusted the Assistant Director's time from 45% to 60%, so there'll be a little bit better of an offset for the funding there. There shouldn't be any issues with keeping him at that range, even though, you know, he deals a lot with the police reserves, and that doesn't count as part of this grant because it's not an emergency management technical function, according to the state. So other than that, I really don't have much to add. They have lessened some of the reporting. It went from 12 items to five. However, Maggie was kind enough to go through it very quickly and note some of the changes that I'll be probably talking with her about later on. But I have no issues with signing this and it'll be, hopefully, a quiet year this year.
There's optimism.
Any questions for me?
Mr. Barth?
How are disasters happening now?
We shouldn't even talk about them. Knock on wood type thing, but, you know, we feel for Iowa right now. Luckily, we didn't have to go through what they did, and, you know, we've had a rough go at it, and now they're dealing with some issues over there, so...
Commissioner, Benega?
Jason, do you just want to make a PSA on your need for reserves that I've seen on TV a few times?
Yes. My... Thanks for the invite on that. Doug Blomker was down and did a request for police reserves. You know, volunteerism is down, and we are actually down numbers on police reserves. And we encourage somebody that would like to come and join the police reserves to sign up. You can go to our website, the county website, and sign up that way, or stop in at our office.
It's a very admirable volunteer position in the community and significant need for us also.
And we do have a class starting fairly soon, so...
Anything else? Commissioner Barth?
Is there an age limit?
Join up. We'll see. Well, Doug, he's an experienced martial arts trainer, and, you know, he's fairly old, but I think he can keep up with some of the best of them, so they get put through the wringer pretty good by him, so I think you can handle it.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other comments? Questions?
Not to approve me joining, right?
Right. You doing martial arts, I think. So... So we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks for being here this morning.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to item 13, which is to consider a motion to approve a consume and blend alcohol beverage license for a wedding event on September 19th at the Isaac Walton League. Good morning, Olivia.
Good morning. Olivia Larson with the Auditor's Office. We received an application from Caitlin, and I'm probably going to say her last name wrong, but I think it's Haake, for her wedding taking place on September 19th at the Isaac Walton League. It's a consume and blend license, so this would allow her to provide but not sell the alcohol, and I've not received any concerns from Planning and Zoning, Sheriff, or State's Attorney.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega?
Aye.
Hiberger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. All right. That takes us to item 14, which is the hearing report from the Absentee Ballot Task Force and some of the recommendations. Good morning, Auditor's Office.
Good morning, Commissioner Bob List from the Auditor's Office. And yes, today, Mr. Cam Nelson is down here to give you the cumulative results of their observations and recommendations from the Absentee Ballot Task Force. So I don't see any need for me to stand up here anymore, so Cam, would you care to come up?
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you? My name's Cameron Nelson, representative of the Absentee Ballot Task Force. I have for you today our recommendations brought forth in two parts. One, recommendations to the Commission, and two, recommendations to the Auditor's Office. Members were Kent Alberti, Deborah Elifson, myself, Cameron Nelson, Suzie Patrick, Sue Roust, Kurt Sale, Kia Warren, and Carl Zilstra. Members were asked to analyze data and process... and processes in order to provide recommendations for future steps the county may take in upcoming elections, particularly this coming November. Additional topics that we... that will be revisited are legislative options to bring forward to the legislature come legislative session in February and March, at which point the task force will reconvene after the November election. So our summary of findings. The task force wants to commend the Auditor and the Auditor's Office and his staff for their evident dedication to and the effectiveness in maintaining a secure and accurate election process. The Auditor's Office anticipates up to approximately 35,000 voters in Minnehaha County to vote by absentee ballot in the coming 2020 general election, with nearly 100,000 requests for absentee ballots statewide, per the South Dakota Secretary of State, Steve Barnett. Most of the deviations, as we really looked at what happened during the primary election and the concurrent city municipal election in June, the... any deviations from typical operations were primarily due to, obviously, the two concurrent elections at one time. So one individual was sending in two ballots, which only exacerbated the amount of tallying and processing that the absentee ballot boards needed to process, as well as the Auditor's Office. And including closing the county offices the weekend prior to the election due to a civil emergency. The task force does support the Auditor's decision to hire approximately 20 full-time employee or equivalent additional workers to better accommodate the pace of return absentee ballots, approximately 44% of which were returned in the six days leading up to the election. So that... Those numbers, as you may have seen in the media, were staggering and overwhelming for the office to keep up with, so we do support that recommendation. Based on the available data and stress points in the system, the three main considerations that the task force would like to recommend for the Commission for further consideration is adequate and efficient, secure place to hold the processing portion of the absentee ballots and any of the tabulating for the election process; two, the appropriate funding to do as such; and three, an action plan to secure appropriate amount of election workers. I have in front of you an applicable South Dakota codified law, Title 12, which basically which discusses the delivery of the ballot to the messenger or by mail. The second one is particularly for later on, a recommendation to the Auditor's Office for which they are matching signatures from the ballot application and the returned voted ballot. That process is a bit cumbersome, and so the Auditor's Office is tasked with matching the signatures on the back of the returned ballot with the original signature on the request application. So this statute just allows the Auditor's Office to make that recommendation and to verify those signatures and withhold those individual applications from going to the ballot boards, which will streamline the process significantly. I have a couple graphs for you. This is the 2016 primary election and the 2016 general election. As you can see, there are... The red is the applications. The blue bars are the sent, and the green is actually the returned ballots. So in 2016, there were 2,366 absentee ballots returned for the 2016 primary election. That, if you go to the next slide, is in comparison to 14,921 absentee ballots returned for the 2020 primary election. So as you can see, those numbers are significantly higher than the previous election. And so the determination of 18,173 absentee ballots in the general election, which are pretty much more attended by voters, there's a larger turnout. We do anticipate about 35,000 absentee ballots returned for this general election in November. Which brings me to recommendations to the Minnehaha County Commission. The task force would like to seek the Commission's endorsement. Originally, this was an endorsement requesting an exception to South Dakota codified law via Secretary of State's Office, Steve Barnett, that Minnehaha County would be allowed a temporary extension to the time period allowed on and before the day of the election to process absentee ballots as determined by the Auditor. After a consultation with Kia Warren, with the Secretary of State's Office, the Secretary's Office would not support that, as it was deemed that Steve Barnett, as Secretary of State, the highest election official in South Dakota, would not have that authorization. So the recommendation would be to either by this body, the Commission, or the Auditor's Office, request a specific language request from the Governor Kristi Noem to enact any powers under her possession for the state of emergency declaration for this coming election to allow that exception to start processing those ballots prior to the day of. It gets a little tricky. I did speak to Drew DeGroot with the State's Attorney's Office yesterday. He does believe that the Governor may have those powers. Whether or not she and her legal counsel would choose to exercise that power would be completely up to her and her office, but we would like the Commission's recommendation and endorsement to do as such, at least to get the ball rolling, if that is an option. The task force does recommend that the Commission consider using existing county properties as secure drop box locations for voted ballots, including but not limited to the 13 Sioux Land Library locations and other properties secured for use by the Auditor. Now, I understand that last week, the Mayor of Sioux Falls chose not to support the use of the libraries, so I would encourage the Commission and the Auditor's Office to consider looking at other venues to make that secure. There is support from the Sheriff's Office, so the availability for use may be determined by existing hours of operation and existing staffing for voters returning their ballots inside the facility or through the purchase of secure boxes placed outside on property owned by the county or by permission of the property owner. Minnehaha County will assume responsibly for returning those ballots to the Auditor. Days and hours of operation would be at the discretion of the Auditor, but may include any day or hours during the 45-day absentee voting period prior to Election Day. The task force does recommend that the Commission consider adequate funding to support the additional labor needs anticipated for the 2020 general election. As I evidenced earlier, we do support the hiring of additional staff, which would equate to roughly 20 full-time employees. That might be a larger number with part-time staff, just to make sure that the onslaught of returned ballots prior to the election, those six days prior, is alleviated and able to securely and timely report those findings. Additionally, the task force recommends that the Commission consider developing a call-to-action marketing plan to recruit workers by targeting groups with larger populations, AKA teacher groups or any universities, and consider reaching out to the corporations in the community that does support civic duties, volunteering, et cetera, in addition to promote the call-to-action via PSA, social media, and possible absentee ballot mailings. The need for individuals is great. The Auditor anticipates needing roughly 500 individuals to participate in a working... as a worker for the election, either at polling places or through the absentee ballot boards. So it is a very significant number of individuals, and we just need community members to step up and participate if they are able and if we can make a very safe environment for themselves. The task force recommends that the Commission ask the Auditor to consider appointing a temporary Public Information Officer during the election process to assist the Auditor in communicating with the public and the media for issuing regular updates. And the task force recommends that the Commission recommits to the values of security, accuracy, timeliness, and transparency regarding all elections in order to enhance civic confidence in the electoral process. Now I'll move to recommendations to the Auditor's Office regarding the process. The task force recommends that the Auditor provide absentee board members with a training video before Election Day so they can review the board process ahead of time, ensuring any training makes clear the requirements for opening absentee envelopes and records to be kept. Consider in-person training for the supervisors. Now I know the supervisors are an additional portion this time around, which is receiving significant leverage, and having those supervisors trained adequately will greatly help the process. The task force encourages the Auditor to establish and publish an anticipated deadline for reporting results and to create a work plan and timeline with daily benchmarks that will enable the Auditor's Office to meet the announced estimated reporting schedule and accommodate possible additional personnel needs. In the days prior to the election and on the day of the election, issue regular public updates regarding the status of the process in meeting and/or not meeting the anticipated timeline for completing tabulation of the results. Really, we're aiming to ramp up confidence in the public and the election process, so that is a determination. Pursuant to South Dakota codified law Title 12-9-10.1, we'd like the Auditor's Office to consider discontinuing the internal process or practice of stapling the printed ballot applications to the voted ballot envelopes. If the signatures have been determined to match by the Auditor via digital database or the application does not need to be sent to the absentee ballot board accompanying the verified ballot, then the Auditor and his staff will initial or have a verified stamp on the backside of that ballot that will streamline the process significantly. The task force recommends that the Auditor consider preparing ballot board kits with all materials necessary, rather than attempting to assemble each table one at a time. That was a little snafu, just because we had to match signatures in a very non-typical way. The task force recommends that the Auditor consider including a list of common scenarios of discrepancies in the process. Like I was telling Commissioner Barth, there are many individuals. Rod Mary Johnson may mail back both of their ballots in one envelope to stave on a postage stamp, so just making sure that what the process requires due to state law is very clear for those ballot boards. Regarding security, the task force recommends that the Auditor work with the county sheriff to create a contingency plan that in the case of a natural disaster or civil disturbance ensures that a safe and secure workplace remains available for ballot processes, both in the week immediately prior to and on the day of the election. The task force recommends that the Auditor set up a designated absentee ballot worker registration station as workers do come into the site to include identification verification process. The task force also recommends that the Auditor consider utilizing a traveling log sheet. This is kind of getting in the weeds, but this will allow better tracking of the precincts as they go to the ballot boards for that process and then back to the tabulating machines. Regarding labor, the task force recommends that the Auditor create a highly qualified reserve squad who can be deployed to fill in or assist where needs become apparent during the week prior to the election and on the election. Now, with the additional staff that the Auditor does plan on hiring and deploying for that, it may not be necessary for this one. However, having individuals from other county departments know what may be required of them would strongly increase the process and make that apparent. The task force recommends that the Auditor dedicate teams to receipt and evaluation of the applications, receipt and evaluation of incoming ballots, and then sending out the ballots. The task force also recommends that the Auditor provide for a quality control employee at the automated... the automated tabulating machines on Election Day, which is evident already, to double-check tabulation results with the goal of avoiding misled uploads, double counts, and undercounts. Regarding marketing and communication, the task force recommends that the auditor continue communication and dialogue with the local postmaster well ahead of the forty-five day absentee voting period. Project a timeline of deliverables and include messaging to voters to help the process by returning their completed ballots ahead of Election Day, if at all possible. The task force recommends that the auditor consider developing a marketing plan to educate the voter regarding best practices for absentee voting, promote via PSA, social media, and possible inserts into the absentee ballot mailings for mailing early, matching the signatures, and using graphics and visuals rather than a letter format. The task force also recommends that the auditor consider surveying voters after an election, looking for feedback to improve process, and collecting data that may be used in crafting legislative change if necessary. Those are our recommendations from the task force. I will stand by for any questions or comments.
Thank you very much.
I know it was a lot.
Yeah, it was a lot of information. I know you guys had an opportunity to meet a few times. I am going to just clarify, I just got a note, and I just want to clarify. I think there might have been some miscommunication between you and Drew DeGroot about who has the authority.
Okay.
And Drew must be listening, and so he sent us an email that says that his position is that the governor does not have authority to do that.
Okay.
That the governor and her attorneys might feel differently about that, but he does not believe that the governor has that authority.
Right, and I believe I used the word "may" have.
Yeah, so I think he just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
All right. Questions for Drew? We've got a lot of information here, so could have an interesting discussion. Commissioner Barth?
Thanks for presenting. You did a great job. Have you ever thought of running for auditor?
I think I'll pass on that. Thank you.
There's no law that requires results to be out by ten o'clock at night, is there?
That is correct. There is not a law.
You know, so if it takes...
It is rather an expectation by the public and the media, but as the auditor has said many times, he would lean more towards an accurate election rather than a fast election results process, so.
I'm in agreement with that. So, if Rod and Rita Johnson send their stuff in in one envelope, is, are their ballots disqualified?
I don't know the specifics of that. Auditor Litz might have more information on that.
If we got the ballot early enough, we would go back into their voter registration or the form and compare the signature to find out who of the two had actually signed that, and then we would try to contact the person whose ballot would be disqualified and ask them to come down and fix the mistake, so we can count their ballot. We get toward the end of the election, discover those things, it's very difficult to arrange that, but there is a process for remedying it, and we attempt to do that.
Madam Chair, since we have Bob, let me ask you, Bob. I've heard anecdotally that other counties start counting absentee early. Is that true? And if it is true, how come those auditors have not been arrested?
I can't testify to that, because I've never seen it with my own eyes, so I'm loath to speculate on things that are said secondhand. That said, I've heard that rumor as well.
It'd be up to members of the press in other counties to track that rumor down. Madam Chair, again, you know, clearly, you know, the city of Sioux Falls has reservations on this issue, and so it looks like we're not going to do it in all the other communities, Hartford, Del Rapids, Garrettson, et cetera. So, if the reverse were true, and Sioux Falls wanted it, and Valley Springs said, "Heck, no," would they have a veto over Sioux Falls having these ballot boxes?
You know, Mr. Barth, or Chairman, Commissioner Barth, I'm not certain about the property that that library would sit on, who owns that, so I think that, and it may very well be that the smaller town municipalities, their town council or their mayor's office or administration may have authority over that.
It's the owner of the property that we would need to work with on that particular issue, and I'd just like to clarify, the mayor's not here, but I've had some conversations with the mayor. I think that the issue here was more that the plan was just being presented by the task force, and decisions needed to be made quickly, and that there are issues about security and about how the plan would actually be rolled out, so I don't think that that was a forever no. It was a, you know, right now, we're not in a position where we have enough information to do that, but in the future, that might be something we'd be willing to look at as we have time to formulate a more, kind of more complete plan. And I think one of the issues, as long as we're talking about those ballot boxes, and this might be an issue for Cameron, and then maybe the auditor might want to chime in on it, but, I mean, it was a very creative proposal, and I've done a little research, and I understand that those types of ballot boxes are being used in other areas. The, you know, just like everything else in our world, people have strong opinions about things, and one of the issues that was brought up repeatedly to me was the whole issue of security, which is one of the values that your committee said that we, you know, really want to make sure that we embrace, and, you know, something as important and fundamental to democracy as the election process. And I just was curious how those discussions went in your committee, and how you guys got comfortable with the idea of security, the security of the ballots as they might be placed in these boxes.
Sure.
Outside.
Well, I will say that the task force was a little mixed. There were varying viewpoints on those drop box locations and the use of them, with the support of the sheriff's office, to make sure that those are returned securely to the auditor's office. Several of us found that that would be more than sufficient for those that were also secured on those county-owned or city-owned, or whoever owns that property, that site. So, there were mixed feelings from the task force as far as the use of those drop boxes and the timeline to implement them securely. However, I believe that there are many individuals who are willing to step up and make sure that a secure plan is in place to implement if need be. I think the whole point was to not lean in towards any sort of, at worst, voter suppression, but to allow as many options for the voter to cast their ballot as possible.
And I appreciate that, and I think the sheriff had expressed desire to be useful in this process, and as he thought about it further, he has, his spouse is...
And that would be the exception.
Yeah.
That would need to be an alternative arrangement for that particular election, just to avoid any conflict of interest.
Right, so, so part of the issue was not just that the people expressed to me was not just the transportation of the ballots after they were removed, but just the physical security of, you know, people being able to put gasoline inside and start it on fire, or, you know, dump a bunch of water inside and ruin those ballots. I mean, did you guys, did you have discussions along those lines? Or, I mean, were you comfortable?
Discussion did not quite get that flavorful, as far as scenarios, but I know that many viewpoints did vary greatly on what the what-ifs that could happen in those scenarios. We did not speak to that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Hiebarger?
I'm only speaking because I think it was an important topic, and I appreciate the comments that you've had about it. I think it got rushed too fast. Auditor Litz told us about him last week. Afterwards, I sent him quite a few questions. One of them was, just from the presentation until he gave us the paper, I didn't understand that they were not going to be secured inside a building. I had great concerns about them being outside for some of the reasons that Commissioner Bender had suggested, and they also were brought up to me when I talked to the public about it. I was also concerned about the fast timeline, the cost for those boxes is not cheap, and so I was like, "Well, what are we doing with them? Well, they're going to be sitting there for four years and then used again," and so then we're talking ongoing maintenance, and people sticking mail in a box that is not a mailbox. And I was also concerned about timeliness, because in the county, they weren't even planning on picking up the ballots, you know, daily, and so then you put your ballot in, and it sits there for three days. It's just, it's just a lack of security. And so, I would have had huge issues with it, and I think it's unfortunate that we picked a fight, more or less, with the city over their position. I had concerns about it and intended to bring them up today, but obviously, it's already hit the media.
Commissioner Hiebarger, I would challenge the notion that we picked a fight with the city.
Well, I'm not talking to you.
I certainly don't think that that's the case. However, I do believe that should a plan be put in place, either for this election or coming elections, there are individuals who have viewpoints, who have concerns, and to rather look for a solution to encourage voters to participate in the process. I don't think that you can put a price on participating in the voting process, so I think as far as the sticker shock of those drop boxes goes, I think they are absolutely worth it, with the right plan implemented. I absolutely agree. There are individuals who are willing to step up and make that happen, so I would caution this body, or the city, or any of our community members to jump so blindly into an excuse viewpoint, rather than looking for solutions to make the voting process better for voters.
And I don't call it, I don't think I made an excuse. There was some people that were angry with the city.
Yeah.
And I think that's important, and I just think we needed more time to come to conclusion, and I did have a lot of questions.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Karski?
It used to be so easy. Election Day, you go down to the polling place and you prove who you are, and, or sign an affidavit, and vote, and put it in the box, and at the end of the day, they're all counted. Voting's changed just so much in the last four years, six years, and I'm a little vague on a few things, and I don't know, maybe this is a Bob question, but absentee voting versus early voting versus mail-in voting, are they all the same thing, or is there a significant difference between them?
There is no difference. As for the state of South Dakota, it is called absentee voting. So, you use an absentee ballot to vote, rather than going to a polling location. They're one in the same. South Dakota chooses to clarify that definition as absentee voting.
Okay, and then going back to the multiple ballots in an envelope, I mean, we had an election, the city had an election, we get, the ballot was supposed to be sent to the city and one to the county, but we had them both in the same envelope, and maybe the husband, Rod and Rita, both stuck all four ballots, and it should have been four envelopes. Technically, what you said, they shouldn't have been counted without being able to physically verify, and when you look at the volume, that just gets to be a mess.
Yep, and each one of those returned envelopes is scrutinized by a ballot board, member four individuals of varying parties, to all come to a consensus on what to do with that particular ballot. There then, if they're chosen to be spoiled, then they go into a spoiled envelope, at which point, they are kept and logged, and then at any such point as a recount, for instance, that three-person body chose to review those spoiled ballots as well. So, there is many, many lines of authentication and verification for the absentee process.
And I'm on board with the whole security thing, because when I hear our auditor saying, you know, the few days before the election, he can hardly push his door open because of the number of ballot stuff, you know, that are just coming in, and, I don't know, are they, over here at the election center, it's a county building, is it a secure building? You know, these ballots are all sitting on the floor, people are walking and shoving them into a mail slot. That, to me, seems less secure than a box. Who's going to maintain all these mailboxes or boxes? I mean, it'd take a room half the size of this just to store them, and then to store them for so many years, and, yeah, it gets to be a whole lot of questions, and questions that aren't answered.
And I would remind Commissioner Karski that the task force really has no authority whatsoever. We are a citizen panel who reviewed, you know, a sliver of the entire process, more specifically for the absentee voting process, so.
And thank you for that, and this board doesn't have a lot of election authority either. I mean, if the auditor says, "Hey, I need some money to do this, and it's outside the scope of my job," we can discuss that, but we don't have election authority either. Bob Litz is the election official for all elections, so I'm grateful to the work that you've done. It's some great information. Will it all be implemented before? Well, I mean, we're already starting. I mean, we're...
Yeah, many of these items have been started, or almost done, or are complete already, and the task force recommendation to bring those forward to the commission was just of support of those initiatives.
Last comment. If you're going to vote absentee, or early, or mail-in, follow the rules. I mean, it's very specific on how they have to be returned, so my advice to anybody that's doing it, and there's very specific guidelines, follow them.
Thank you, yes.
Your ballots early. Commissioner Bennika?
I want to thank you guys also for all the work and the efforts you put in, because when we asked for the review, excuse me, we were, I was excited to see what your responses were, the positives, and then maybe the things that need to be improved, so thank you for that, and we appreciate the expertise of the people that were on that board to be able to support the process. It seems like the Secretary of State and the governor may have a little bit of ability to make some changes, but the real issue is the legislature's going to have to be pursued to do some of those issues, and that's going to take some time.
That's right.
I think the other thing that I've heard over and over in this conversation is the lack of enough HR resources, if you will, and I think that's even going to be a little bit of a bigger challenge with teachers going back to school and the school systems up and running, because frankly, they weren't doing that in the last election. So, I think the marketing effort that you have suggested is extremely important, that we get that process moving quickly, because we're going to probably need as many or more people than we've had in the past. The one thing that I'm not totally confused about, but I, do you have any idea how many of the signature issues where they were thrown out, if you will, or reviewed the second time? How many of those ballots actually were set aside to be reviewed?
I don't have data on that specifically. I don't know if Auditor Litz does or not. I think it was very few.
Yes, there were not that many, and I just had a conversation with Mr. Greco, and when we did the Staley recount, I think there was forty from the city that were looked at again, and that board for the recount chose to pull the ones out that the previous board had said did not match or did not qualify. I was a little surprised at that, but that's the way it went down, so.
Thank you.
So, forty out of twenty-two thousand ballots?
Well, they had about fifteen thousand, and we had about fifteen thousand, and, you know, I have, I'd have to go check, because the disqualified ballots are in a different pile, but I'd like this body to know that we sent out forty thousand ballots, and we got back a little over forty thousand, we got back approximately thirty thousand ballots, and that might have been due to the nature of the, you know, the Democrat ballot, the style of the Democrat ballot, a lot of people considered it moot. I don't know that, but there's ten thousand ballots we sent out, did not come back, and then the other day, I took a count on the ballots that were turned in late, and we had three hundred and twenty-four, twenty-six of them, and then the undeliverables were about a hundred and eighty ballots. And so, they got all these different categories of ballots that are disqualified for whatever reason, and I don't have a number of them that were disqualified for the signatures this time around, because it was not an issue when I did the legislative recount for LD number nine.
The other thing, if I might ask, at one point, you were doing some research about looking for additional machines to count?
Yes.
And there was some concerns about receiving or getting the inventory, or whatever at that time. I don't know that we've heard what that process has been, good or bad, or where are we at with that?
It's been brought up again, that the next window of opportunity for purchasing another tabulator would be after the first of the year. There's a lot of jurisdictions updated their machinery, and ESNS, I think, was very busy providing those machines, and as a result, they've depleted it. And I would also mention that I've got the DS eight fifty, or Minnehaha County and the city have the DS eight fifty. The next generation of nine fifty has actually come out, and I'm wondering if that's going to be the next one, and... to be the next one. And I'm, they said that it is going to be compatible with the 850s, which would be good. I was hoping to get more than eight years out of a, out of a piece of election equipment before it's obsolete. So that remains to be seen, but after the first would be the window of opportunity for purchasing a new one.
Well, September 18th is only three weeks away.
Yes.
And you need prep time before that drop dead date, if you will. And I can't express enough about the need for significant planning and implementation to put some of these things into, and I know you've worked on a lot of them already, but the three weeks is going to go by fast.
Yes, I'm aware of that. My days are kind of long, because I don't sleep good here anymore, but that's part of the game, you know? So, yeah, and I would like you to know that, you know, we, we talked about, and Cam alluded to this here, we talked about a board for the mail-in ballots of 20 people. And actually, we're going to have about 50 people because of the part-time nature of that. And, and we don't really know. After we do that initial drop of ballots, that's a bunch of work, getting all those ballots ready. Have to, have to get the envelope, you have to put the label on it, you have to put another ballot in, or the return envelope. And I've got a letter going out with that that says, vote it and return it, basically. You know, so after that big thing, we drop them in, then the ballots start coming back in. We have no idea what that, what that graph is going to look like at this point. So, and I've emphasized that to everybody that's working, and they seem to be okay. And so we'll always be a day behind on, on knowing how many workers we have to call in, but we've certainly got a large reserve of people to do it this time. And like I say, I hope that the ballots, part of my, part of my thinking on the absentee ballot drop boxes was that the ones down here at the county and the ones throughout the city of Sioux Falls would have been the ones that accumulated the vast number of ballots. Yeah, but to kind of flatten out that, that graph that went up and kind of get some flow into it, and I don't know that it would have worked, but it was certainly worth trying. I also wanted to make another point of clarification. I've had people come up and talk to me about, you know, the absentee ballot boxes for it. But last week, when I talked to this body, I spoke at public and trying to rouse up a little support and kind of pave the road a little bit. And before that time, and during last week, I had aggregated quite a bit of information. And, you know, the city, I think they kind of felt a little blindsided, but I did, I wanted to come to you today with that information, just to lay it out. And we're talking about mechanics of the boxes, securing those boxes, you know, what could happen to them. And I got, so I got a manufacturer, I got a price, I got permission, tentative permission from the libraries out there. And I also, yeah, I had the bid and some other information on ballot boxes. And I was going to bring that and present it to the commission today and just ask for permission to go to the city with that. I didn't, you know, I didn't know what comes first, the chicken or the egg, you know, type thing. And if they feel slighted, it certainly wasn't my intent to do that. My intent was to aggregate some information, so we had something to talk about. And it was actually Drew DeGroot was preparing some sort of agreement, so we would have an easement. And that was where the rubber was going to hit the road on the details. And when Drew submitted that to a junior city attorney, that was when we found out that the administration had nixed the idea. So we really never got off the ground on it, and so, you know, it was very frustrating to me that we weren't even going to have this conversation. Sure, we can put those boxes in in two years, but this is the election that it's going to matter on, this one. So that was why I thought, to me, it was, it had an emergent nature to it, and that was, that was the cause of some of my consternation, was I wanted to get going on this thing. And I believe that if, if, you know, we, we put some horsepower on it from the city and the county, that these issues could have been worked out, you know, before, at least, at least by the end of September. But, you know, when, when the city pulled out of it, I had reserved some spaces in manufacturing, and I don't know how many of you have worked in production, but you know, you got that space in the queue as you come up, but I could still pull out, which I did earlier. But I do have two boxes still being ordered, they're still being manufactured, and I did want to talk about that today, but I think I'll just bring that back to you next week.
Okay. Thank you. Are there other questions for Cam, since he's here?
Commissioner Benega, I would just like to clarify that the state law is very specific on what election officials are able to do on the day of, as far as directing absentee precinct boards to meet on election day prior to the close of polls to begin that processing of those absentee ballots. Now, in time of a pandemic, in a declared state of emergency, the powers provided to either the governor or Secretary of State's Steve Barnett are what is kind of that gray area. What, what are they comfortable with? And so the law is very clear on what we are able to do. The exception during a pandemic or state of, state of emergency declaration is what is less clear.
Yep.
Let me tell you, you found out there are a lot of things that are not so clear under the law when you're in a pandemic, so that was not the only issue. Commissioner Heiburger.
Just a comment. Commissioner, or Auditor Litz, I appreciate your explanation and getting up and kind of setting the record clear as to how the events came about as they did, and I appreciate that greatly. And hopefully, we can work through details as we go along. I also wanted to say, which I think I was remiss in doing before, was to thank you the people that volunteered their time to do this task force, because that was a tremendous commitment to time. And also that our elections don't run unless we have a lot of volunteers. And so if you have time in your schedule, I'm not saying you specifically, Cameron, but if people have time in their schedule, to please consider volunteering or coming down and working for us, because if you want your numbers out quickly, then we have to have the assistance to do it. I wouldn't want Auditor Litz's job, that's a big job, and the whole county depends on what happens in this office, and you cannot do it without assistance. And this is a tough time to get people. So if you got time and you're comfortable, come down and volunteer to help get the system going along.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Cam in particular, because if I'm correct, you volunteered for this last election, that was your first time.
I did, yes.
And that's a, that's a big job and a big commitment. And so you are our poster child for people who can volunteer and.
Also be a worker for the absentee election, yes. Absolutely.
So I, I agree that that is something that we all need to be part of the effort to recruit folks for. Commissioner Bar.
You know, there are a lot of things to be said, and by the way, I still think you'd be a good candidate for Auditor. You're a good spokesperson, and so that's, that's a big part of it. You know, there are people out there that are on a daily basis disparaging and disputing absentee ballots, the post office, the results. They're already claiming it's a total fraud. 170, whatever, years ago, Abraham Lincoln won an election where troops in the field voted by mail. Now, it's possible that those results were manipulated so that, that the Republican president would be reelected, but I don't think so. And I don't think that anyone in Minnehaw County will manipulate these votes. But at the same time, there's no perfect security. You could firebomb a mail truck, you could, you could burn the courthouse down, you could do all this kind of stuff, and it's not going to be perfect. You know, at one point, people did not get to vote. And then we had the Magna Carta, and nobility got to vote. And then slowly, property owners and others got to vote. And it became our, our right, our privilege to vote. Well, forget the privilege, it's our duty to vote. It's our duty to serve our country, it's our duty to do the best for our country. Get out there and vote, I don't care who you are. And let's, let's honor the results, and let's honor the people that helped make those results happen, and the people that are willing to put themselves on the line to, to fight for election. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, thank you again very much. Not only did you volunteer to serve for the first time in the process, but you volunteered to be the spokesman for this committee, and, and we thank you and everyone who served on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that takes us to item 15, which is to consider a resolution and authorize the chair to sign an underwriter's agreement for issuance of certificates of participation. Carol Mueller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Minnehaw County Commission Office. Before you today is a resolution relating to issuing certificates of participation, authorizing the execution and delivery of one or more lease purchase agreements, and approving and authorizing execution of related documents. Several years ago, what was 2017, Minnehaw County put in place a facilities needs study. Part of that came out, that we needed to have a new highway facility, and there were facilities that existed that needed to be renovated in order for us to have better space allocation for what we need to do at the counties. So before you today is a resolution for $25 million. I want to point out that this is coming about the timing, because the county has debt service that expires the end of this year. And therefore, you are able to do this with no tax increases to anybody. And I know that that's been a real critical point for you, that you can do that in that particular, in that particular way. $25 million is the maximum amount, and the auditor's office and the chair will sign the documents. I would just share that Tom Grimmon from Colliers is here today, in case you've got any detailed questions for the underwriter on this. But the first one will be $10 million this year will come across as a bank qualified and up to $10 million. And then once we know specific costs on the highway facility and remodeling this building, then you'll be able to fine tune exactly if it's another 10 million needed, or 11.5, or whatever, and maybe it's $8 million. You will be able to fine tune that number exactly. So that is why there would be two issuances of doing that. Would open up for any questions that you may have? This has been a long time coming. You've had a lot of discussions about it so far.
Questions, comments for Carol? You did a good job kind of explaining that it has been a long road. This is not something that we have, that we are just doing as a knee jerk, where there's been a lot of planning, looking at our finances, and seeing that we were having a lot of bonds that were being paid off at the end of this year, which would free up some of the levy in order to leverage that to address facilities needs that we've been looking at for many years now. And we had a citizens group look at in depth for us, and we're following recommendations made by that group. So if there are no comments or questions?
Move approval. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bar?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Yep. All right, so that takes us to liaison reports, and kind of as a point of privilege, I have been part of this COVID committee that we've had since, for a really long time now, since back in March, and we don't meet every single day anymore. But COVID has been in the news as schools back in session, and Jill Franken was kind enough from the city to come over today and just give us a little update of where we are right now. I've had a lot of people asking, you know, particularly as some of the positive rates have increased, but the hospitalization rates have not, and that's confusing for folks. So I was hoping you could bring a little clarity to that for us.
Sure. Yes, and I thank you for the opportunity to come this way. Anytime I can get in front of folks and be able to, you know, communicate the message about what we need, where we're at in the community and what we need to be doing as a community, I'm grateful for that. So again, Jill Franken with the Sioux Falls Health Department. And yes, the county has been a tremendous partner to us in the COVID response. You've had a number of individuals that have been really very actively involved in the work that we have done since March, and in particular, has been really reducing the rates of transmission through some of the work we've done with being able to find temporary housing for people who need to be in quarantine or isolation. And that's just really made an impact in this community at key times when we've really needed to make sure we get a handle on transmission of some of our really vulnerable populations. So really, thank you for that partnership. Recently now, we've just been seeing kind of a lot of volatility, actually, you know, in our rates. They've been very kind of dynamic when you look at what's happening in both Lincoln County and Minnehaha County. Minnehaha County really kind of mirrors, from a rate perspective, what's been happening in Sioux Falls because of the density of population that's in Minnehaha County. And so when you see the trends, they're very consistent between Sioux Falls as well as Minnehaha County. Typically, what we'd been seeing during this time period of COVID was that Lincoln County trended a lot lower than Minnehaha County, but we're starting to see that percentage change just a little bit. And if you go to sioufals.org/covid19, you can get on our webpage for our dashboard, and you can actually click on Minnehaha County, you can click on Lincoln County, you can see Sioux Falls as a whole. And so I would invite you to, you know, check that out as often as you would like to, to see kind of where we're heading as a community and the segments of our, of our community. But we are seeing that as a little bit of a shift. One of the things that we also, you'll see on that dashboard, is our hospitalization rate, and that, you know, that's one of the things that we are pretty grateful for. You know, we look at where our trends are occurring, and, you know, probably because of our demographic by age being, you know, that's where we're seeing a lot of the cases in our community. The majority, vast majority, are in that younger population. They're less likely to be hospitalized. And so you're seeing those hospitalization rates really staying anywhere from the mid-20s to around 40, which is very manageable for our health systems right now. And that's not per hospital, that's the entirety of what we have hospitalized in our community. And so that's very manageable right now. You know, I am reminded by folks to be cautious about just sharing that as the ultimate good news, because there's a lot of people getting sick with COVID in our community that still, you know, may not be hospitalized, but because of the advances that we are making in being able to keep people at home, they're still getting quite sick, you know, a number of them. And so it isn't as if we only are monitoring and, and regarding hospitalization rates. But certainly from significant policy perspective, that would be a driver of really needing to regard policy to make sure that we are able to manage people having a place to go and a hospital bed should they need it. So, so that kind of gives you sort of a lay of the land. You know, right now, we're really busy working on, you know, what's into the future here, and what does the fall bring? And obviously, what's, you know, garnering so much of our attention right now is what's happening in the schools. And we, as a health department, have been, at a local level, have been a key partner with the school districts to, you know, help provide any technical assistance we can in making sure that they have what they need to be able to, you know, manage their policies and their procedures. And so we're grateful for a strong partnership with the school districts that we have. You know, one of the things that we're telling people is it's time for us to double down as a community. If we want our schools to be successful and want our families to be healthy so that the kids can be in school, we really have to do the things that we know we need to do as a community. And so that's why I'm always encouraging, you know, wearing our masks when we need to, maintaining our, our distance between each other of greater than six feet, making sure you're washing your hands, making sure you're staying home if you're sick. All those measures that we need to be taking as a community to make sure we're mitigating the risk of COVID. You know, I'm also concerned that we're developing a consistency in our community so that people feel safe being out and about. And that's something I think we can continue to work on in our community, is that consistency in, in the practices that we are employing. When I see businesses that, you know, one server is wearing a mask and another isn't, I know the kind of message that's sending to people that are, that are engaging, trying to engage and want to patronize those businesses. And so I think always thinking about those types of things, you know, from an economic standpoint, I think the consistency could be really beneficial for our community as well. And then fall weather, you know, or fall in general, and what we are going to start seeing with influenza, that's something we're paying very close attention to and really encouraging people to get their flu shots. We, as a health department, will start getting our vaccine in shortly, and we'll start vaccination clinics as soon as we can in September yet. One of the things to remember now is they really believe that, you know, a vaccination for influenza can last about a year, rather than just a few months that we might have thought years ago, that there really is that effectiveness over a longer period of time. So I really encourage everyone to get their flu shots as soon as they possibly can. And that will just assist us in this fall and winter period when we see increasing rates of virus in our community beyond COVID. So those are the things that, you know, we're continuing to monitor and look at and watch for and advise on, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Heiburger.
I just have one. Thanks, Jill, for coming. Appreciate it. And it's nice to have an update. I've been looking at the state site, but I hadn't looked at the Sioux Falls site, so I look forward to looking at those numbers, always wondering what's going on here in Minnehaw County. I appreciate you talked about flu season two coming up, and I was not aware that the flu vaccines were good for a year. You mentioned your office is waiting to, you know, until you have all your supplies, but do pharmacies, did they have supplies that people who go to pharmacies or to their doctor can start getting flu shots?
doctor can start getting flu shots already, or will we all be waiting until mid-September so we don't have a rush on these places?
Sure. I think probably we'll be getting, you know, everyone will probably start getting theirs around the same time, because we're, you know, purchasing them from some of the same vendors, and so, you'll start seeing them advertising probably within the next few weeks, if that hasn't already begun, which I'm not sure that people have really been advertising that yet, but we should start seeing that real soon.
Thank you.
Other questions? Commissioner Barth.
Madam Chair, Jill, thank you for coming, I wish you'd come and see us more often. So, you know, the fact that we're getting in good habits with masks and washing and distance, that'll help us with regular influenza as well, won't it?
Oh, absolutely.
So if we're vaccinated, if we're following our current program, we might slip through the influenza thing. So, but a different question slightly. I saw where Minnesota claims that they have fourteen people that are positive after going to Sturgis. Do we have any numbers like that, and are they sending their people back to South Dakota?
Well, certainly, we can assume that there were folks from Sioux Falls that went out to the rally, we know that a lot of folks enjoy going out to the rally every year. And so, I'm going to assume, but we don't know exactly how many of folks that have tested positive from the rally reside in Sioux Falls, but I, I would imagine, you know, you can deduce that there's probably some of the increase that we've seen recently might be due to that, but there's a lot of factors happening right now. There's just a lot of variables, and so, I wouldn't pin it just on one without the facts, you know, being presented to me, because with school starting and with activities ramping up, there's just a lot of opportunity for us to transmit this virus. And so, I think it's just really, that's why we just have to keep those measures in place and, and continue to work hard to prevent transmission.
Other questions? Commissioner Bennega.
I'd just make a comment. This has been a crazy year, from floods to tornadoes to the COVID-19, emergency management stresses, your stresses with health-related issues in the community and in the state. It's nice to have the leadership group that we've had information from that's maintained, I would say, a professional calm and leadership example for all of us, rather than reacting to some of the national news one way or the other that makes news in some cases. So I wanted just to say thank you and your rock star team for being a resource for us to be able to depend on, rather than frankly, overreacting or underreacting sometimes. And I think the health system supports that we have in this community with obviously the hospitals and with the state are to be complimented for what they did, because they did maintain some calmness to this whole hassle right from the beginning, and we're lucky that we had that kind of leadership, rather than frankly, some of the other things that other states are facing. So thank you.
Thank you.
I would certainly agree. I mean, if you, if you travel at all or visit with people in other areas, I think, living here in Sioux Falls or in South Dakota, we do not realize how wonderful we have had it, how much freedom we've been able to enjoy, and how good it is to live among people who care for one another and who do look out for one another by trying to, you know, follow social distancing and wearing masks when needed, and taking care of themselves and staying home when they're sick, to care for the people around them, and that makes it better for everyone. And I, I would also, I do go to the Sioux Falls COVID site almost every day, it's got, it's full of fantastic information, so I would second that. For, for anybody, I think people are really desperate to try to find a source that they can trust, and I think that's like, it's where I send people, it's a source that you can trust, and it's updated every day, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, well, thank you very much. I appreciate you being here today, so. All right, any other liaison reports today? Commissioner Karski.
Yes, last Tuesday, after our commission meeting, that got done at 11:15, I went to an 11:30 board meeting for Minnehaha County Economic Development Authority, combined with the Lincoln County Economic Development Authority, which, when you think about their names, they're not endorsed by truly either county, and they have no authority. So there's a push being done to basically rename and repurpose that group, and to combine it into one organization instead of two separate ones that require separate bank statements, separate audits, and literally cost extra thousands of dollars a year. So I think it's a, a very good move. You know, we, of course, had updates on some of the commercial parks around, whether it be Brandon or Down in T and so on and so forth, a very well-represented group. But we're looking at, like I said, just bringing the two together and renaming it to maybe match more what the mission of the group is, and to just be better designed. So, that's what's happening with that group.
Commissioner Heiburger.
A real short one, I talked to our human services yesterday, and just an update on the ones in Sioux Falls, which Commissioner Barth did mention, and she said that they'd gone through about $70,000 already, and she said it is going very well, applications are coming in, things have been very thorough and very easy to, to manage in their office. And so, she was very appreciative for the money that has continued to help citizens of our area.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Barth.
Last night, we had a planning and zoning meeting here, I was the only one that zoomed in. We had like seventeen items, one of which was a text change which would allow manufactured homes not to be confused with mobile homes, which arrive on, you know, their own undercarriage, but manufactured homes to have less than a full foundation poured underneath them. It would reduce the cost of, of the building for lower-income people, and the idea would be that instead of a concrete wall going all the way around, that they would have skirting like mobile homes, like trailer houses. And we passed it, it will be coming to this body to discuss, but, you know, there's often been talk about how regulation can increase the cost of doing business, and this is a regulation that, you know, the city of Sioux Falls could still say no, the homeowners association could still say no, but do we want to regulate that family from, prevent them from having a home, you know, in, in the rural area somewhere? That's, that's the issue coming forward. The rest of our stuff was all large buildings and moving building eligibilities.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennega.
Just a quick update that Commissioner Karski and myself and the Assistant Administrator, Mr. Dewey, made a, I'd say, a two-day quick trip to multiple locations in the region to start the process of looking at the highway department needs, and I found the trip to be very educational. It's not only about what people did, it's more about what they wished they'd have done differently. And it's easier to learn that by seeing what's going on versus what theory talks about, so I appreciate the tour, and even if I had to spend that much time with Commissioner Karski for two days, but, and we destroyed his fishing trip, so that's his dedication, so thank you. But more importantly, this will kick off multiple meetings in the future, so we'll be able to meet on a regular basis to analyze some of the information we've received, so thanks for the opportunity.
Well, thank you. Go ahead.
If I could add to that, and thanks, Commissioner Bennega, yeah, Tuesday, or Thursday, airport at 7:15, and I think we met till almost nine that evening.
You left early.
I did?
At 9:30 at night.
I think the beer was gone.
Well, that's true.
But, the comment from the architect that we hired, I think, really spoke to the process that we're doing, because they've done many of these types of buildings for numerous counties across Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, and just numerous other states. And the architect commented, to me at least, that he has not seen this type of involvement from the body that's trying to build the building. Most of the time, he said, they hire us, they say, build it, and then they look at us when we're done, and they say, why'd you build it that way? They just didn't get the, the, he said, to have us along and to have us looking and have our feet in the buildings that some they designed and some they didn't, he said, really spoke highly of our process and our commitment to getting it done right, so I thought that was good to hear.
It was.
Madam Chair, I have to say that our jail committee benefited from Commissioner Bender traveling around and visiting jails in the whole area, none of them kept her, but we had-
Couple tried.
A couple of our correctional officers and stuff went along, and they, I think everybody on your, on your group really enjoyed that trip, and I think it did benefit us greatly. And so, I thank you, Gerald and Dean, for going on this, and we will all be better off because of what you learned.
Yeah, it did really inform the discussion, you know, through the whole, you know, multi-year planning and, and building phase, and, and it is, it's easier and cheaper to learn from other people's mistakes than to make them yourself, and so that, I thought, was a real key part of that process, so.
I would just say, and I think I heard Dean say the same thing, that I was surprised at how easy it was to talk to individuals, and they would share operational mistakes, facility mistakes, and had no concerns about sharing how the funding didn't or didn't work. It was, there was no holds barred in the conversation, so I really appreciated that.
All right. Any other liaison reports? New business? Any new business?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, this, this last little adjustment we did today on Highway 115 at Midway Corner, just like we had that Red Rock Corridor Study going over towards the casino, I think we need to study Highway 115, Sioux Falls to Dell Rapids, and come out with some kind of a plan, 115 being Cliff Avenue, because, you know, they're going to be building McDonald's and, you know, cattle barns and you name it, and we, we should have a kind of a plan as to how it's going to set up, to include infrastructure like sanitary sewer, water, et cetera. And so, I think I'm going to talk to the planning people about coming up with something in that area.
Thank you, great idea. Commissioner Karski.
A big announcement tomorrow for the community triage, 10:45, I believe, is the scheduled time, so it is a public meeting, so it's going to be right to the north of the city admin building, or not the admin building, but city hall, basically, where the mayor's office is, so a lot of good stuff going on.
All right. Any other new business? Any old business? If not, it entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, we'll try to reconvene right around 10:30, if, if we can get everything done.